I call this meeting in the Northeast Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, and the time is 5:38. The Board will now go into closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.074 and 551.0821. Next item of business, Level 4 FNG Parent-Student Grievance. The Board will now reconvene in open session at 7:43 PM. Next order of business, possible action regarding Level 4 Parent-Student Grievance? Do I have a motion regarding the grievance?
No, no, no.
I make a motion to uphold the Administrator's decision at Level 3 and request a review of retaliation and bullying policies at a future Board meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Chidji. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. The motion carries 6 to 0. Ms. Landry recused herself. The grievance hearing is now concluded. Thank you for your participation in our process. Thank you, Administration, and I hope everybody has a great evening. The Board will now go into closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.074 and 551.0821. The time is 7:51 PM. The Board will now reconvene in open session at 9:28 PM. Next order of business, possible action regarding Level 4 Parent-Student Grievance? Do I have a motion regarding the grievance?
I move to uphold the administrative Level 4 grievance decision, and we would like Administration to provide a written summary to the Board on the efforts NISA is taking to maximize opportunities for all students to participate in productions.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Shelton. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
We have five yes and one no, and one recused for Ms. Landry. The no was Mrs. Villarreal. The motion carries. The grievance hearing is now concluded. Thank you for your participation in this process and hope everybody has a good night. Hang on one second for my fellow Board members. I've got to figure out what I'm doing here. All right. We will now, the Board will now adjourn into executive session pursuant to the following sections of the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code Sections 551.071, 551.072, 551.074, and 551.076, and the time is 9:30 PM. The Board will now reconvene in open session, and the time is 9:43, and I would like to thank everybody for their patience while we get through this agenda. So, item number 10, matters from executive session, a personnel including but not limited to administrative appointments pursuant to Government Code Section 551.074. Do I have a motion to approve the position as discussion executive session?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Shelton. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Villarreal. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. Motion passes, 7 to 0. Item number 11, presentation, a budget study session number two, and we have some people signed up to speak. So, Ms. Thompson.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Board, Dr. Mica, executive staff and guests. My name is Serena Valdez. I am a kindergarten teacher at Larkspur Elementary, and I am also the elected president for the Northeast Education Association. We submitted a salary proposal as a comprehensive benefit package that provides the needed help to all staff. We did this earlier in April. In this proposal, Northeast ISD continues to be last when it comes to paying their educators amongst the surrounding San Antonio area school districts. A response to Northeast being at the bottom is the high turnover rate of over 20% of teachers, which costs the district an estimated $18 million a year. This trend shows that the current administration is not doing enough to retain their teachers when choosing not to reward educators with a sufficient salary that shows they are valued in the Northeast ISD. There is more than sufficient money available in the fund balance to afford the increase in stipends that we are asking for. The fund balance is now over $200 million of over 40% of total expenditures. TEA recommends 20% of total expenditures in the fund balance. We are asking to give all NEISD employees a one-time, nonrecurring retention bonus of $1,500, along with a fall and spring stipend of $500 each to teachers, librarians, and those employees on the teacher's salary schedule, as well as a $500 retention in June. Paraprofessionals and other non-certified and auxiliary employees shall receive a fall and spring stipend of 2% stipend based off their annual salary. They should also receive a retention stipend of 2% based off their annual salary in June. To help the district plan for the following year, we propose that the district offer a $300 stipend to teachers, librarians, and those employees on the teacher's salary schedule that report to the district by March 1st their intention to retire or resign from the district. The total estimated cost of the district is about $10 to $20 million. Can we afford these stipends? Reminder, our fund balance is now over $200 million or at 40% of our total expenditures. The current fund balance minus $20 million spent on the proposed employee stipends will still have a remaining $180 million. NEISD is currently reducing its staff at a time when the demands on its staff continues to increase. Please show the educators and staff that you value their profession and approve the stipends for next school year. Thank you for your time and consideration in this matter.
School Board members, Dr. Mica, executive staff and guests, my name is Millie Camp, and I teach at Northwood Elementary School. I just finished my first year as an elementary ALE teacher, which, for those who don't know, is a self-contained special ed class through kinder through 5th grade. Currently have 11 children on my caseload of varying disabilities. In the fall, we will have 14. Three of my children are toiled at least three times a day with myself, my only full-time para, another para, and one full-time private nurse fulfilling those duties. I love my kids, and my passion is teaching them, and I know that this is what I'm supposed to be doing with my life. I want to keep working with my kids, but the pay isn't sustainable for this job, the toll that this job takes on me. My daily life consists of changing diapers, chasing eloping students, listening to screaming children, potty training, managing destructive behavior, creating and executing an individualized education plan for each of student, not to mention teaching, preparing lessons, collecting data, and everything else expected of a teacher. I feel blessed, I'm blessed to feel supported by my administration and my instructional specialists, but I don't feel supported by the district or the state. I hope the school board considers a pay raise for staff and stipends for high vacancy positions such as ALE teachers. Thank you for your attention in this matter.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Teresa Hurd. I'm a proud paraprofessional employed with Northeast Independent School District for the last 17 years. I've currently, I am currently serving as the Vice President of Northeast Education Association. Tonight, you'll hear information regarding the deficit budget and the district is facing and the current plan the district is considering to help alleviate that debt through some tough decisions. We have a 40% fund balance. The district can use this, can use this to give retention stipends to all employees. The first 15 years that I worked for this district, including working summer school, I was barely making $20,000 a year. I was on welfare, I was on food stamps to provide for my family. Many of your classified employees have multiple jobs to pay their bills and support their families. Every penny counts and help us to continue working for this district, but also to make, to help us take care of our responsibilities at home. I came here to make sure our voices are heard, and I want to stress the importance to you all here in attendance of how crucial it is to improve upon our already strained services. Although surrounding districts are using their rainy day funds to provide raises, we would like you to consider stipends as a viable option for compensating the hard work of your district staff. I strongly encourage you to consider what I've said and as you discuss next year's budget and compensation for your employees. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. President, Board members, Dr. Mica, and others. I taught for 32 years in another district.
You state your name, please.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
My name is Deborah Parish. I taught for 32 years in two other districts, and my mother taught in this district, and in the other districts, I retired in 2007, and in the other districts, when my mother was very upset that I would not, was not teaching in this one because this had the best people, and this had the best this, and this had the best that, until I told her what I was making in another district as a schoolteacher. And she was shocked and horrified. The income level of the people in this district at that time was much higher than a lot of the rest of this, the city of San Antonio area, and she had no idea that districts that were considered poor districts were making more, that staff were making more money than they were here. I understand from previous meetings that there was a $38 million problem, but I had, I would not have imagined that staff here were on the bottom of the list for their, for their paying. So I hope there is something you can do, and from what people have said earlier, apparently there is some kind of money that could be used to help out. Thank you.
Thank you.
President Byer, members of the Board, Dr. Mica, staff and audience, I'm Tom Cummins representing Northeast AFT. First, thank you, Dr. Mica and staff, for the work you are putting in to develop this budget. Irresponsible political leadership in Austin causing financial deficits is a challenge we recognize that you have. However, despite the challenge, the district's needs must be met, and a major portion of those needs are pay and benefits of employees. Will the pay raise at each level attract enough teachers and support personnel to fill the vacant positions and retain current teachers and support personnel? An unfilled position hurts the kids and puts a strain on other teachers and support personnel. And still, many paraprofessionals and auxiliary staff do not have the living wage they need, nor is pay competitive for some jobs in other districts. Northeast AFT asks that the teachers, librarians, nurses, counselors, as well as other professional job categories, receive at least a 3% pay increase of their salary, not 3% of the midpoint, but of their salary. Paraprofessional auxiliary personnel should have a 4% pay increase to begin catching up to a livable wage. We also request a $1,500 retention supplement payable half in November and half in May for all employees. Finally, we ask the district cover any increase in health insurance premiums. This proposal is what needs to be, and it should be a goal for this Board and this district to keep in mind while you go through the budget. Meanwhile, there are other non-financial steps you can take to both retain, excuse me, and attract teachers and support personnel. These include not allowing unprofessional behavior by a few principals and supervisors to go uncorrected. We've had that problem this year. Second, return to the eight-hour-a-day for teachers, which recognizes the teacher's professionalism. Third, work towards a culture of trust of all employees by listening to their thoughts and opinions and acting on them. The key is the word "acting on them." Finally, Northeast AFT urges the Board to approve the maximum pay raise it can. NEISD as well as other districts need to return to the stability that we have had in the past. To best serve the students, we need an experienced and stable workforce. And again, the key word there is "stable." We don't have that right now, so it must be a district priority. Again, we do recognize the work that you do in trying to put this budget together, and we wish you well on it, because we can benefit by your hard work. It is a challenge, and we hope you meet it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Budget study session number two, Mr. Villarreal.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the Board, Dr. Mica, executive staff and guests. Tonight, we bring you Budget Study Session Number Two. We completed one two weeks ago. We did the budget adoption rules, legislative update, revenue basics, school nutrition, and benchmarking. Tonight, we hope to talk about campus staffing, additional allocation requests, health insurance, and a compensation discussion. We have a Board meeting next Monday to talk about debt service, final update, additional compensation discussion, detailed budget view, and hope to adopt on Monday, June 17th, which will look at the tax rates, general funds, school nutrition fund, and debt service. So recap from Budget Study Session Number One. We talked about staffing. We just briefly said some things about compensation, health insurance, additional allocation requests, and general fund summary. So recap, increased property values do not increase overall M&amp;O revenue. 2.5 limitation is an overall M&amp;O tax collections. Homeowners may still see tax increase greater than 2.5% if their home value increase despite further compression of the tax rate. To reiterate, we do not set the values of the property. That's done by Barre Parishal District. And then, school nutrition, we're adding an additional community eligibility site, which allows all students to eat for free. And with that, I turn it over to Suzie Lackhorn, our Executive Director of Finance and Accounting, to talk about Budget Study Session Number Two.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we're going to start by talking about our staffing. As you have probably heard a few times from us, salaries and benefits make up the vast majority of our budget. It usually averages between 85 and 87%. So staffing is a very important driver to our cost structure, which is why we talk about it first. Looking back over the last few years, we want to talk about the cuts that we've made in central office. Oftentimes, we talk primarily about campus staffing in this section, as campuses are, again, make up the majority of our budget. And so, here's just a slide that takes you through the last few years of the savings that we found as we have looked through departments and as people leave, reimagining those positions and reallocating work. So, over the course of the last few years, so over $3 million in savings for the general fund alone. It's 68 positions and total savings of $4.8 million. As you can see, we have other funding sources. You only adopt budgets for general fund, debt service, and school nutrition services funds, but there are other funds where we receive federal funding like entitle and other programs, and so some of these cuts impacted those funds and didn't flow through the general fund. So that's the difference between those two columns there. Again, $3 million in savings to the general fund over these last few years. And just a little note, a little disclaimer, when I was putting this slide together and I looked back at what we did at Budget Study Session Number Two last year, I showed you a number of just over $1 million for the general fund, and by the time the summer was done, we had found a couple more positions that we had eliminated. So it actually, if you try to go back to last year and try to tie that number out, it's higher this year, and the same thing is possible for this summer, that $950,000, we've got a couple more positions under review, and so that number may change to the good by the time the summer's over. All right. So looking at campus staffing, we have a shrinking enrollment, and with that comes a decrease in the need for staff, primarily teachers. And so for '24-'25, the change between elementary teachers from one year to the next will be about 46, saving the budget $3.4 million. Middle school, 36 for $2.6 million, and high schools, just under 20 for $1.4. So that's overall savings of $7.5 million. And non-teaching professionals, these are other campus staff who are certified, it's three for about $248,000. These were pretty much primarily counselors at the elementary level, whereas we do formula-based staffing for that position, and so as our elementary schools lose enrollment, then they also lose staffing related to that loss of enrollment. And campus assistants of 35, that's across all, all the levels, and that saves us about $1 million. So a total of about $8.7 million. Now, all of our staffing decisions are based off of enrollment projections, and you never get every campus enrollment projection exactly right. So in our budget, we have about $2.5 million set aside to hire staff as elementaries or even secondary end up, like if their enrollment is much higher than what we projected and we need to add staff, then we already have a contingency built into the budget so that we can hire that staff just as soon as possible. And so, kinder through fourth are added because we have a compliance requirement of 22 students to one, and so this contingency helps us fill those positions as needed. Okay? All right. Now that we've talked about how many staff, let's look at compensation. This is our pay raise history going back to 2013, 2014, and as you can see, only 2017, 2018 was, was the only year without something. Last year was our big package. It was a 4% minimum for professionals, 6% minimum for hourly staff, and we had targeted adjustments with a lot of individual groups receiving more. And then we did a 2% fall retention. This retention was paid out of our ESER funds, that was the federal stimulus funds that we had related to the pandemic. We used those funds for our retentions from '21-'22 through '23-'24. So those funds actually helped a lot in helping provide extra retention supplements to our staff. So you can see, we did a 1% in the fall and spring of '21-'22. We did a 1.5% in '22-'23, and a 2% in '23-'24. And so those funds were very useful in building that extra compensation for our staff.
The last time we got, received any new monies was in 2019, so we've been flat in that respect. So that's why it was important to try to give those retention incentives with ESER dollars. If it wasn't for that, it would have been a lot more tougher.
That's right. We talked about that last, last time, that the funding formula has been at the same level since 2019, and as you can see here, leveraging those ESER funds really helped drive that compensation. Here's an example of what a 1% raise would cost the general fund. It's about $4.3 million. It's just broken down by category just to help you get an idea, but overall, $4.3 million. If we look at doing a retention, sorry, hold on. A retention, instead of a raise, a retention actually is a little bit less expensive. We do not, retentions do not qualify for the teacher retirement. So since it doesn't qualify, it then costs the district a little bit less. So the downside of a retention is that it doesn't count towards teacher retirement. From a budget perspective, the retention isn't an ongoing commitment, whereas a raise, once it's given, it's committed for future years. So those are the two main differences between giving a raise and giving a retention. One, the raise commits you for future years, and the retention is less costly as it doesn't qualify for TRS. Throughout recent news and for the rest of the summer, there will be a lot of talk around about what other districts are doing and throughout the state, and not just our area, but everywhere. And so, we talked last time about how other districts have access to different levels of revenue, and one of that ways is through doing an election and getting those extra pennies that the voters approve. And then several districts in our area have recently done these VATREs, voter-approved tax rate elections, and they've tied the approval of that, those pennies, to giving raises. So some of our surrounding districts are having to give raises because they made that commitment to the voters whenever they went and asked for those pennies. You'll also find districts around us in very similar situations that deficit budgets are the norm now. Not having a funding adjustment since 2019 has really put most of the districts in the state of Texas in the same situation and being at a deficit. And so you'll find that a lot of districts are juggling the same struggle that we have, where we have a deficit and you still want to compensate your staff. And so districts are having to make some very tough decisions right now. We talked last time that districts have different levels of reserves. Some have been stockpiling reserves for years. Some districts leveraged ESER in different ways, and some of them are struggling with bigger deficits because those, the staff that were funded in ESER had to come back to the general fund. So you'll see a wide variety of things. No district is the same across the Board. I think several districts are preparing for voter-approved tax rate elections as state funding has remained stagnant, and just bear that in mind as you hear all the news stories, that everybody's in a slightly different situation, and ultimately, you'll still see the headlines where we're all in different situations, but almost everybody's in the same deficit situation.
And one of the big districts to the west of us, I'm not going to name them, they have 5.67 months of fund balance. Now, they've come out and said they were going to do 2% with a 1% retention, but even after that, they should still be over 4.8 months of, even when they use that. So as a point of reference for us, at the end of this year, we'll be at 30%. I know there were some different numbers given, but if you look at, we'll, we'll show you our fund balance at the end of that, and you'll be able to see how many months we have, and when you calculate how much expenditures are, it's really 30%. So it's like three months. So, but I just want to, it's because, I mean, we keep hearing about deficit, 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 and now we're starting to hear different districts coming out and saying, well, we're going to do a 1-in-a-1 or 2-in-a-1. But when you look at their, their financials, because all the financials are out there, I'm not sure how they're going to be able to do it, and like Suzie said, they're going to have to do a VATRE, or they're going to have to do massive cuts, because there's not, there's no way they can sustain that by just looking at their financials.
Just taking a look across the area, each year, whenever we're looking at pay, we like to compare ourselves to the districts where our teachers leave us the most. And so we're able through our submission of data through the state to see which districts our teachers leave us for the most. And so this is the group in our area that we see teachers leaving us for. And so this is the group in our area that we see teachers leaving us for. We are that bold, gold, yellow, I think it looks gold to y'all, line kind of in the center. So we have, for starting pay, three districts above us. So this is broken out by years of experience, so zero, five, ten, fifteen, and twenty years of teacher experience. And the starting pay, you can see, we are fourth versus our competitors here in our Lola area. And as we go, we end up kind of at the twenty-year mark tying for third with two other districts. It's interesting to note a couple of things here. So some of these districts that are way below us, even if they give a pretty substantial raise, those two lines down there, they're really not going to catch up to us with a significant raise next year. The districts that are close to us, I want to show you on this next slide how our staff has been interacting with leaving and staying. So those same districts, those seven districts that were there, and remember, the first two were higher than us, and then the others were either about the same or paying less than us. And so our first two districts who pay more than us, we about, we about break even with teachers leaving northeast and going to those districts, or versus the number of teachers we hire away from that district. So that first line is fifty-four of our teachers left us and went to that other district, but we hired sixty-eight of their teachers into our district. So we had a net of fourteen teachers move between us. And area district number two is only ten between the two of them. And it's just interesting to note that the districts where the net isn't closer to a break-even point pay a lot less than us. So we've, time and time again, we ask, and we're often told that it's not always just pay that are driving those decisions for teachers to leave. A lot of times, it's closer to home, or this is where my kids go to school, or those kinds of factors. And so these numbers line up interestingly against that other chart. Whenever we talk about compensation, it's really important, as we stand out as very different than the districts around us, to talk about health insurance. We contribute a substantial more than most districts in our area. This chart shows, over the last five years, our average contribution per employee has gone from five thousand one hundred and seventy-nine to five thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven. So that's a fifteen point two percent increase over that timeframe. The average of the area districts has gone from thirty-eight, sixty-eight to forty-one, thirty-eight. And as you can see, we're substantially higher than all of those. From, we, back in twenty eighteen, we're thirty-three point nine percent higher. In twenty twenty-three, we ended up at forty-four point two percent higher. So we contribute a significant more than a lot of our other districts around us. They grew about seven percent, we grew about fifteen percent. And we're going to transition now into, oh, I'm sorry, let me make this one last statement. The reason why we point this out is that a lot of times, you will see a higher salary in another district, but that doesn't always translate to your take-home pay is higher. Because once you factor in very expensive health insurance plan compared to ours, then take-home pay can definitely be lower whenever you're moving out. So let's take that thought about health insurance and look at our self-funded health plan, because these costs are very important to compensation and our budget.
And Susie, just to, just to mention is that we're self-funded in our health insurance. That means we manage it through Blue Cross Blue Shield, but we pay, as opposed to a fully insured plan, that a lot of entities in most school districts have. There's not many self-funded health insurance plans. That's why we look at it, and we dissect it, and we really work with risk management and benefits to try to see what's best for our employees. So when you do compare pricing as what we have as opposed to other districts, and even some private sector, we're very, very, very competitive. We still have a ninety-ten plan, and that's unheard of. There's no other district in San Antonio that has a ninety, you know, insurance covers ninety, and the employee covers ten percent with some limits. We have an eighty-twenty, and we have a high deductible plan. So we're always proud of our health insurance plans, and the district, the school board has graciously donated, I mean, contributed a lot more than what some other districts are. So I just wanted to make sure that there was, you all realize that it's self, we're self-funded in our insurance plan, and it's not a fully insured plan. Because what happens a lot of times is people chase rates. Like other districts, they'll go out for two years, and then they go and get ETNA, or they'll get Cigna, or they'll get, you know, so they're just chasing rates, and there's no consistency, there's no, and we've had Blue Cross, we do bid it out, and we compare every few years, but we've had Blue Cross for the last twenty-nine years. But like I said, we're competitively bid it out, and we're using their network. So I think that's one of the things that I think people, our employees, do appreciate, and they might not remember, in that we're not chasing rates, we have our own plan, so.
No, it's good. It's very important to remember that we are self-funded. That makes a big difference. And also having consistency in your carrier, and so you're not constantly having to find out whether or not your doctor is on your new plan. I think a lot of employees appreciate that. Looking at our enrollment history, we've consistently had over seventy percent of our employees participate in our health plans. We have three plans, a low eighty-twenty PPO option, a high ninety-ten PPO option, and then a high deductible health plan, which has only been around for a few years now. So we've got six thousand employees on our plan. Another two thousand participate in hospital indemnity. So if you don't take our health insurance as an employee, you're automatically enrolled in the hospital indemnity, and that just provides some funding if you're admitted into the hospital. And so that's a benefit available to employees who don't take the health insurance. So we have a total for twenty twenty-four of eighty-three hundred employees. Obviously, as the district has decreased in size, we are decreasing in employees too, and so you'll definitely see a shift as we have smaller numbers of employees. But throughout the last five years, we've, like I said, been consistently over seventy percent participation. The very bottom, these are employees and dependents to give us a total member coverage. And so just a, just a quick note, the slide's coming up. Our health plan runs on a January through December year, and our fiscal year, of course, as you're getting ready to adopt this budget, runs July to June. And so we'll look a little bit at both those time periods, but most of our numbers are through that January through December. And that's how we evaluate our plans, is by that calendar year. So our medical costs and prescription costs from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three increased by two and a half million. And as you can see here, our medical really dipped a little bit, and it's prescription that was driving the increase. Overall, it was an increase of six point four percent in plan year twenty twenty-three compared to twenty twenty-two. Our medical cost in total was one point one percent, and our prescription was fourteen point two. So a couple of examples of popular prescriptions that really, we rank the prescriptions that, based off of how much, what percentage they are of our total costs. And Monjoro, which is one of the new weight loss prescriptions, went from rank one forty-five to rank two. So it was a nine thousand percent increase in its usage. And so in the long run, weight loss can help prevent other medical issues, and in the long run, that might be saving the plan and preventing those extra medical issues. And so Paxlovid, an antiviral, also increased from rank three hundred to eleven, just to give you an idea of the wild world of pharmaceuticals. So Blue Cross Blue Shield is our provider, and they project a four to six percent increase for medical and ten to twelve percent increase in pharmacy for twenty twenty-five. This chart just shows you healthcare costs per employee over the last few years, pretty consistent increase from year to year with a couple of dips. I don't think it's any big surprise to anybody that healthcare costs rise on average from year to year. If you want to look at where our healthcare spending goes, the bulk of it at thirty-one percent is in professional services, that's your normal visits. Twenty-nine percent is the next highest category for prescriptions. Then nineteen for inpatient services, and fifteen percent for outpatient services. This is our premium increase history since twenty eighteen. As you can see here, the twenty twenty-two year is the only year that employees saw an increase to their premiums. So over the last seven years, employees have only seen an increase one time. The district has contributed multiple times and taken the burden of the extra cost each And as we have done that, our contribution percentage compared to the employee contribution percentage has grown some from sixty-four percent back in fourteen, fifteen, to seventy-two percent for our projected twenty-three, twenty-four. And then that, it dropped the employees' contribution from thirty-six to twenty-eight. So the district's just taking on a larger share of the burden. So our proposal for next year will be not to increase the employees and to do an eighteen dollar increase to the district contribution. When we incorporate that into the financials, that brings a projection for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year of a positive one point five million, but a break-even in the plan year, January through December of twenty twenty-five. And if we look at their fund overall, twenty twenty-two, they lost six, the health fund lost six million, two million last year. We're projecting it to be just over two million this year, and then budgeting for one point five million for next year. And remember, this is on the fiscal year, July through June, and then we also very carefully look at that plan year, so that going out even further past that fiscal year for that plan year of twenty twenty-five puts us at break-even. And so they have a decent fund balance in the health plan, and that's it for health That increase will cost the general fund about one point five million, that eighteen dollars more a month for each employee. Other funds will have a portion, it'll be a total of about one point eight, but the general fund will cover about one point five million of that cost. So that's one of our big cost drivers, along with compensation. And then we have an opportunity every year for departments and campuses to request additional funding as needs arise. This year, we have about one point five million in needs, four hundred and thirty thousand in staffing, eight hundred and ninety-five thousand in ongoing costs that are non-staffing related, and then a hundred and forty-seven thousand for one-year cost. Our chiefs like to compete to see who has the lowest number each year. And so business services has a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for an increase to property insurance. We have seen very substantial increases in our property insurance in the last few years. So it's with a big sigh of relief that we are projecting only a hundred and seventy-five thousand. This was significantly larger last year, and we've been doing multiple, the last few years have all been larger than this. And so homeowners are seeing the same thing, but when you have twelve million square feet of buildings, it's just really magnified. And so a hundred and seventy-five was, I stood up and did a very happy dance that day. So campus administration, we have some needs when our, some of our schools travel, and one school in particular, I don't mean to single them out, but they have a different district, and so they're having to travel a little bit further for games this next year. And so that means that they'll be out of school for a longer window because they'll have to leave earlier, they'll have to do things. And so those, that UIL does the district alignment, and so whenever they aligned, they, this one particular campus will now have a lot. That whole cost is not just them, some of it is just covering cost in general as those transportation costs go up for events, but the bulk of that two hundred thousand is related to that realignment in UIL. So another cost that we feel is important is inspecting our auditorium rigging systems, and so making sure that those are safe. We have a lot of students coming in and out of those, that stage area and everything, and so it's important that all of that gets inspected and keeping our students safe. So campus administration's two hundred and sixty-seven thousand for instruction. We had staff that are used to train teachers. In twenty nineteen, the state passed a bill requiring all elementary teachers to go through reading academies. It is a lot of training. We see them constantly coming through. It's a massive number of modules, and we have to train every single teacher that covers reading in elementary, basically. And so with at least two hundred and fifty more teachers to train, we need the additional staff that had been added into the ESER program to finish out all that training. For operations, we now have a CO2 detection requirement that needs to be added, and every time CPS Energy raises their rates, it's a really big impact to us. So we're projecting about a half a million in that rate increase, and so six hundred thousand here for operations. All right. So now we've talked about compensation, we've talked about health insurance, additional allocations requests, and I already forgot the first thing we started with, staffing. Let's take a look at how all of that compiles together. I'm actually going to skip this first slide and talk about changes from one year to the next, and then I'll just pop back to the one before. So we're recommending the one percent retention. That is a four million dollar cost. Those campus staffing changes that we walked through saves us about eight point seven million. The non-campus staffing that we looked at was another million. When the district adopted the less than one hundred and eighty-day calendar, we had campuses who were no longer doing intercession during the school year, and that saves us some cost and supplemental pay and those kinds of things. So that'll save us about half a million. We are going to take a reduction in everybody's managed budgets. So each campus and department receives budgets to spend to buy their supplies and stuff, and so we are asking them to reduce even further. And so we're going to, the actual budget reduction will be more like a million dollars. We don't expect every dollar to translate into actual expenditure savings, because not everybody spends all of their budget. And so we're projecting eight hundred thousand in reduction of expenditures related to that budget cut. The district health insurance that we just talked about, the general fund contribution would be one and a half million. The additional allocation request that we just walked through, that's another one and a half million. Back in twenty nineteen, the state decided that the teacher retirement system needed a multi-year plan to shore up its funding. to shore up its funding. And so, they increased certain rates over multiple years. We are in the final year of that increase and so we expect that increase to cost us about three hundred thousand. And just be prepared though, normally the way it's been over the last two decades is when that runs out and the next legislative session, we'll see it again. And so, they're constantly evaluating their financial stability of their program. And so, between one year to the next, we expect some one-time costs to fall off and just a bunch of miscellaneous other stuff, ups and downs of about, a savings of about one point six million. In the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, we should be paying for some big chiller repairs that are related to a winter storm a while back. And so, that won't necessarily translate into expenditures for twenty-four, twenty-five. So, the net change in total is about five point three million in expenditures. And so, this is what that looks like. So, our forecast for expenditures for twenty-three, twenty-four is fifty-nine point nine million. The forecast, including all the things that we've shown you tonight for twenty-four, twenty-five, is about five hundred eighty-eight point five million. As you can see, our percentages are very similar. The salaries and benefits again is that eighty-five to eighty-seven percent. And contract services being the next biggest piece, which utilities is the next biggest piece of contract services. So, you can see it next to each other. But now, let's go and look at it together with revenue. So, if for twenty-four, twenty-five, I'm sorry, twenty-three, twenty-four, let's start at the beginning, we're projecting about a thirty-eight point three million dollar loss will end the year at a hundred and eighty-three million dollar fund balance. Now, I'm gonna give you a disclaimer because this always happens to me. There are a handful of one-time revenue things that might come in. I've got my fingers, I've got my toes, I've got everything crossed. We just don't know at this time whether or not these revenue pieces will come through. We have, we're waiting on an appeal through one program. We don't know when that's going to follow through. I would be really surprised if we got, got that for twenty-three, twenty-four. But even if we get a settlement for it at the end of the summer, I'll be able to book it back to twenty-three, twenty-four. So, we have a window of, as long as we have the information by the end of August, we'll pretty much be able to accrue it for twenty-three, twenty-four. The state is also looking at a hold harmless for a, a small piece of property tax thing related to frozen properties. The, the state themselves haven't said much about it. But we work with people who work with people who work with the state and so that may come through too. So, there's still several big chunks of, again, one-time revenue. So, these are not things that you can count on and they wouldn't apply to the next year. So, anyway, just, just in case, I'm telling you today it's thirty-eight point three million. And then my luck is as soon as I say that, then things happen and it'll change. So, that would make things better, that would make the fund balance look better. But if those things don't happen, then we're looking about thirty-eight point three million, bringing fund balance down to three point nine months. And then our forecast for twenty-four, twenty-five, with all these things that we've talked about tonight, the one percent retention would be a forty million dollar loss, bringing us down to three months of fund balance. Going out in future years, you have to be very careful. So, I haven't built in some of the savings for twenty-five, twenty-six related to the things that we've been working on because until they really come to fruition, we're fairly conservative in our financial estimates here. So, we don't want to count those things until we can see them through. We also have a legislative session that will start January of 2025. So, the revenue formula can change, they can put more compliance on us, they could require us to do a million different things. So, those numbers are always, anytime you're forecasting beyond a legislative session, those numbers are always very subject to change. And then, again, this is not having contribution to health insurance in future years other than twenty-four, twenty-five. This is not providing any additional compensation in, in those future years. And you can see by the end of twenty-six, twenty-seven, if the status quo was maintained through those at the end of twenty-six, twenty-seven, one point three months of operating balance for our fund balance.
And the revenues keeps going down because we're losing kids. So, I mean, you'd be take the number of kids times six thousand one hundred and sixty, that's why it's reflective and that's why you see revenues just keep dropping.
Now, we've also added in a slide here to help you see what it would look like with a one percent pay raise. So, with a one percent pay raise, that cost would be ongoing. So, with the retention, it stays in twenty-four, twenty-five, but it doesn't have to continue in twenty-five, twenty-six. With the pay raise, it would then have to continue in twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-six, twenty-seven. And so, our losses in twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-six, twenty-seven would be higher than what the previous slide shows. And then twenty-six, twenty-seven would end up at one point one months instead of one point three months. Same factor here for a two percent raise, then you would end up at less than one month of fund balance in twenty-six, twenty-seven. All right, so now, there's no way that we would just let that deficit sit. So, here's a list of items that we're either already working on or going to start working on or just have our eye on as a potential strategy or consideration. This past year, we started looking very closely at our secondary staffing formulas. They hadn't been updated in a while. They, and those campuses have changed over time. And so, we looked at those formulas, we worked with principals and we were able to, in our, our staffing slide, part of that, about two to three million of that was related to that change in that formula. And so, we designed a new formula with the staff, implemented it. But our plan was to implement it over two years because it's a drastic change for those campuses. So, twenty-four, twenty-five is year one of that. And we didn't just redesign the formula and how we staffed them, we redesigned the whole process. Mr. Jarrett and his staff put in an amazing amount of work, working with the campuses on designing efficient master schedules, their class schedules with their students. And so, a lot of work went into it. And so, in twenty-four, twenty-five, we will continue that work and hopefully see additional savings. We will also closely look at how our magnets interact with those secondary campuses in relation to staffing. So, another thing that we've talked about in recent weeks is our facility assessment. So, last year, the board approved us, working with a firm to assess all of our facilities. We will get the results of that assessment in August. And as that is reviewed, we will work together as a team. Some of the things that come out of that facility assessment may be able to drive savings and efficiency decisions. It, it will be, if nothing else, very interesting. We're also looking at efficiency. We talked last time about campuses and how, and the efficient use of our buildings. We'll also look at efficient use of programs. And so, we've talked about these things before here and there, but we will continue that process starting in August. We are piloting a redesign of our HAM program and so we'll be reviewing that this next year. And then if successful, then we'll implement the change on a broader scale in future years. One thing we've been doing as part of the district scorecard is going department by department and reviewing spending and their needs and going through the last three years for every single department. And several departments, we've discovered had not as much need as what they had. And so, we were able to, in our, it, it shows up in my other line, but we've been able to reduce their budgets. And so, we've also been able to find some spending that we could change and make it more efficient. We're also continuing reviewing the staffing at departments. And so, you saw the list of the central office cuts and so that's ongoing. It's not just done every time there's a vacancy, but it's always done when there's a vacancy. And then it's done additionally, when we do that budget review, we're going department by department and looking at their staffing setup. We're gonna continue our cost containment program. So, last year, we implemented restrictions on travel, food and furniture. Those things still can happen, just not at the scale as before. So, this last year, we have a process to request furniture. We have a process, a restriction on total amount of food and limiting the amount of longer distance travel. We're also gonna start an attendance study. So, we closely monitored attendance after the pandemic and we talked about this in depth last time with the drop. And the importance of that one percent attendance change, you know, being close to four million dollars. We saw improvements this year and then, and then we didn't. And so, for the first half of the year, got better. Last year was better than the year before, but we want to take a closer look and see if there are any drivers that can help improve that because that's definitely revenue that could change. Without having to change any cost structure or anything like that, it would be great to just recapture that revenue. So, we are looking through different studies, things that other districts have done. And we're building a committee to work together to, you know, either pilot things, study them and see if we can't see, you know, some slight improvements while reviewing our data and analyzing the results. I have to mention that we've got a legislative session starting in January. It will, it, going into this last legislative session, the state set aside five billion dollars for public ed and then didn't spend it. And so, they budgeted it but didn't ever allocate it. We will see what happens next time and it'll be something we talk about a lot this time next year. It runs through, I think, early June next year. So, it'll start in January and ends like June third or something like that next year. And so, and then, of course, as we all learned last time, special sessions can be called. So, it can last quite some time. So, we'll definitely look there to be monitoring any bills that could impact our revenue or our spending because it could easily happen either way. Another consideration, as other districts around us are definitely have done it recently and may be considering it, another way to generate additional revenue would be a voter-approved tax rate election. Those are those pennies that we spent so much time talking about. So, that's definitely something to keep within our list of possible strategies. So, our takeaways from tonight, we're not recommending to increase employee contribution to health. We recommend that that increase all go to the district. We're recommending a one percent retention. And now for my big, big, big disclaimer, okay? So, this is forecast. But we adopt a budget that is a hundred percent fill rate of all of our positions and a hundred percent spending of all of our budget. So, the budget will actually look significantly worse than this. So, instead of, I shouldn't say significantly, I don't know why I'm putting a value on it, but it'll be a larger deficit than what this forecast is. This forecast is telling you what we think we'll end up at in actuals. The budget is a worst-case scenario if, if we never had a vacancy the whole year and if every department and every campus spent every penny that they're budgeted. That doesn't happen, but just be prepared that the next time we meet and we actually talk about that budget. So, last year, we projected a thirty-nine million dollar loss and we adopted a fifty-eight million dollar deficit budget. So, you would expect something pretty similar for that budget for next year with a forty million dollar loss. But I'm always gonna show you forecast and budget when we're talking about it so that you understand the difference because they're two very different things. And when you deal with the amount of vacancies we have and the amount of budgeted funds, you, sometimes you just don't know when POs are gonna come in at the end of the year and which year they're gonna fall in. You also have certain budgets for contingency, Dr. Micah's contingency to hire that extra staff. We won't spend all of that typically. And so, those are budgeted items that don't always translate into spending. So, just, just my friendly budget warning each year, so. All right, questions?
I have.
So, I have a question. Can I just step on somebody?
Go ahead. Okay, so on the VATRE, once you ask for extra pennies, if the state legislature decides to give us more money, do we ever give those pennies back?
I don't think I've ever seen that done.
Okay, so once we go to the voters, that rate remains?
Well, remember, okay, so the thing you need to remember about the MNO tax rate is that it pretty much comes down every year, no matter what, unless you do a VATRE. So, when we were talking about property taxes, the state makes you pull that rate down if your property values grow by that two and a, by more than that two and a half percent. So, ultimately, that rate will come down anyway unless we were to flip on property values, you know, for an extended period of time. But each year that property values or tax collections grow by more than two and a half percent, the state will tell us and force us to bring that MNO tax rate down. And so, over the last few years, we've seen substantial decreases in that tax rate. So, those exact same pennies? No, but overall, will that MNO tax rate come down? Yes.
Okay, and also, one other thing, how many total employees do we have?
It's usually around eighty-three, eighty-five hundred, somewhere between that.
Okay, and so, six thousand participate in the healthcare plan approximately?
Yeah, it's about seventy-two percent.
And do we plan, assuming that a hundred percent will participate or?
We plan for the same average participation as, yeah.
Okay.
That's one of the few non-worst-case scenario things that we do.
Okay, that's all I had, thank you. So, the two point five million contingency fund, is that the same as we had last year or?
It's lower, last year we had three million, but Dr. Micah has graciously given up half a million.
Okay.
We haven't, you know.
We have less classes and less kids, so.
And, and one of the first things we do each year, if we see a class that has exceeded that threshold because they're, they came in higher than projection. If we have a campus that's much lower than projection and so they have extra staff, we will, we will move staff before we add.
And then I just need to make a comment, not a popular one, but I would, I know that the one, a raise versus retention, a raise is that gift that keeps on giving. But our teachers put in a lot of their life and then they retire and their, their salary is stagnant. They rarely get a cost of living raise. And when, I'm saying this not for you, I'm saying this for the room. The retention bonus does not go into their TRS and so it does not help their formula. The raise makes it so we have to give it every year. So, it, it will cost us again next year where the retention bonus is just. So it, it will cost us again next year where the retention bonus is just for this year. So I understand why that's preferred. But it's not something that they can count on monthly, and it's not something that will help them in their retirement. So I would much prefer us to, you've got some plans about how to recapture some money for next year. I would much prefer to see a raise versus a retention.
To that question, because I was going to ask with the retention, is there any tax benefit? Or does it act as a bonus, which usually is taxed at a higher rate?
There's not a change. It's, it's, ultimately, if it pushes, it would be like a raise. If it pushes you over your income tax threshold, then you could have theoretically more income taxes. If at the point we give it, it could slightly generate more withholding, but you would end up getting that back as long as you haven't exceeded your tax bracket. I really don't want to spend too much time talking about taxes here. But over, but overall, the, the real difference is one is ongoing and one is retirement eligible. I mean, and one's ongoing and retirement eligible, and one is one-time and not retirement eligible.
Did you have another question, Terry?
I want to say, were you trying to clarify if that one-time payment gets more money taken out of it?
Right, I was concerned that that retention would be taxed like a bonus, which is usually like 33% or something crazy.
It, it'll all depend on everybody's withholding structure and their, their W-4. But in theory, ultimately, you know, their income tax will only change based off of their total rate. So i- if there is extra withholding and they don't exceed their bracket, then they'll get it back with the tax return at the end of the year.
I have a question. I'm looking at the 2026, it's slide number, it's the general fund forecast for 2026. At what point, it shows that we would only have a fund balance in operating months at a 1.3 if we continued at this trajectory. Of course, I understand you're doing the whole 100% and all the rest of that. I, I get that. But at what point, what I'm trying to recollect from previous sessions, at what point does TEA get extremely upset and they step in? Two months? Well, we're below that at 1.3.
Correct. And I wanted to make sure for the new trustees that there is a threshold of fund balance of two months that at some point TEA decides to step in and.
Ms. Villarreal, that's, the forecast is, that's what we're expecting it to be. It's not the budget. That 42 million in '26, '27, if nothing changes, that's, that's, that's the actual loss, not, not, not the budgeted loss.
So, so look, I'm glad you went back to the slide, Ms. Villarreal. If you look at, look, look under 23, 24. For those of you that were here last year, we projected, or we were, we thought we were going to run a $39 million deficit. We ended up right today, because this can still change a little bit, at 38.336. These numbers in 24, 25, that's what we think's going to happen. It'll be, the budget approval will be higher than 40 million deficit.
It'll be a bigger deficit.
Because I think if my memory recalls me correctly, Dan, the 38.3 that we're showing was actually on the budget like 58 million.
Yes.
Correct?
Correct, yes, sir.
That's what you adopted, was a 58 million deficit. But we knew through the, we don't fill everything, that it was, it was what we believed to be 39. They were pretty close. We were 700,000 off at this point in time. So this is the actual, this is what we've, and again, if, if you'll, and I apologize, I have to talk to like two sets of board folks, right? Folks that are new and some folks that were here through this. If you'll recall back then, we showed this, and what I talked about was at what level are you comfortable at? And then how expeditious do we want to make, go through this process, making decisions that we have to make in order to make up this deficit? That's really what's on y'all's plate. Is that you're the board, we bring you recommendations. This, I've talked to both my nervous Nellies out there about this. Like ultimately, it is up to the board to decide. Your community has elected you to make good decisions, right? We think what you saw was that piece. And Ms. Chidji, I agree, like, look, I think one of the speakers said, we need to listen to teachers. I spent one day, y'all, going to seven campuses. That's all I got, I spent the whole day in schools. And it took me that long because I sat and listened to people. And it kills me what I hear. Because talking to the single mother with two children and the, the peace that she's suffering, like, it's awful. It is awful what our people are feeling right now. And I am extremely upset that the state did absolutely nothing, zero. They got $5 billion sitting up there and did nothing. By the way, I'm not feeling real good about this next session. It doesn't look promising for us. Meanwhile, we have, and you heard those speakers tonight, the suffering that they're having. It's real. You just have to sit and listen, I'm listening. Breaks my heart, and then my, my wife is asking me, why are you sitting in the office at 4:00 in the morning? Because that's what's weighing on my mind. And the thing is, is that at some point, I think Dan told me this a while ago, the roosters are coming back to, or the chickens are coming back to roost. Like, at some point, the chickens have to come back to roost. Now, look, next year, it's not bad, the year after, that's not bad. But that '26, '27, folks, if you don't keep your eye on that, that's bad. It's real bad. And the thing is, and what I want to help you, because what I struggle with, and that day, it helped me so much listening to our employees talk, is I realized, what I've realized a while ago, but it helped reiterate in my mind, that these numbers are so big that most people can't wrap their heads around it. So let me give you a, a, a way that I put it in perspective to my executive staff this morning, when we talked about budget cuts. Is we talked about a 1% pay raise. That's 4.3 million, all right? That means your deficit goes up 4 million. Well, that doesn't sound like so much. Let me give you a different way to think. When you look at the average teacher's salary with benefits and everything included, it's about $70,000. That's 61 cuts of teachers. Now, I'm not saying that's what we're going to do. But it's a different way to look at it. That 38 million is 528 $70,000 positions. It's a lot. Because, look, what, what I said, and Suzie and Dan correct me because I use numbers that are not exact, which they get frustrated at, but it's more or less. She showed you about 85.5% is in people. Meh, give or take, it's around 87. Okay, so when you look at that, that's 87%. But here's what we don't tell you, and I think you need to hear. Of that 87% in people, which is about 520 million, 87% of it is in schools. That's about 454 million roughly. Right, Suzie? That leaves about 68 million that's not in the school. Well, of that, almost half of it is in maintenance and in transportation. See, folks, what I'm trying to do, maybe I just haven't made this clear, is I'm trying not to impact the schools too much. Because what I'm seeing in other districts, and you know, you need to watch, this is what you do as a superintendent. You come to the board and you say, look, I got to look at cuts. And by the way, I can't cut the math teacher. So I'm going to look at all the things that I don't have to do. That's when they say, you know what, we're going to cut all the librarians. Boom, they just cut them, because you don't have to have librarians. And you just cut all the family specialists. And you cut all your sta, and you just start cutting. And then at some point, you got to kind of think like, what impact does that have on the school? I'm not sure that's good. And so we've taken a very conservative approach. Maybe not very, maybe it's just conservative. Because what we're trying to do is buy us time and you time to not have to do it, but to consider it. So let's take dual language last year. That was a real viable savings piece. We went out and listened to our community. Ms. Villarreal, you attended one of those meetings. You came to me and you even said, like, our community didn't like it. Yep, we heard it. They did not want it. But you continue on a too great of a deficit, you won't have the choice to listen. You will have to do it. Because at some point, you can't keep running a deficit this large. And I hate the fact that I have to look, and I won't say her name, but I, I will remember her name, that, that teacher who sat there and told me about her two kids and how those boys cost a lot to feed and that the cost in the grocery store is killing her, it's true. Shame on the state for not doing anything. Shame on them to sit on $5 billion that could have been real for those people in the audience and everywhere else to have felt something meaningful. We did it last year, as I felt it and I heard them, and we swung for the fence. But look, what's coming true is coming true. But ladies and gentlemen, you're the board. We're going to do what you feel like you're, like you're good at and comfortable with. But I want you to understand that every action has an equal and opposite reaction, right? That reaction is, this expedites that, that '26, '27 piece out to where you're not necessarily going to sit and listen as intently as Mr. Jarrett and his staff did last year. Because tough decisions have to be made. In fact, a member in the audience, I'm not going to look out there, because I'll look right at them. I said last year, after the, the budget passed and we approved the raise, and they're like, thank you so much, you know, we're so grateful. And I said, I'm hopefully you're grateful next year when we start making the cuts. Because that's what it's going to take. Because we don't have more revenue. We just don't. I wish we did.
Can I ask another question? Okay, I'm, this is, this is going to come across as cold and mean and hard and nasty. But I'm looking at this, and, you know, frankly, we've increased our monthly contribution, our side, by $18 per month on the health insurance. I get it. I mean, everything's more expensive, I get it. What would that look like? And I'm, you know, before people start heaving eggs and tomatoes at me across the, you know, what would that look like if we did not absorb that?
I, I can't give you that answer right off the top of my head, but it's pretty pricey. So we ran multiple scenarios. One being the district does the whole thing. One being the employees cover the whole thing. And then one kind of sharing. Even the sharing was pretty pricey to those premiums for employees. And coupling, when you're looking at giving a retention instead of a raise, when you couple those two together, then it, it becomes a pay, a monthly pay cut when the employees are paying higher premiums.
Yeah, Suzie, let me jump, Ms. V, just, I'll sum it up this way. What I see most districts do is they approve compensation, and then in the fall, they, they choose to, to do medical. Why? Because you give a, a pay raise and people seem happy about it, and then you take a good chunk of it in the fall from them when you increase premiums. We always lump them together so that we talk about total compensation rather than separate.
That's a bait and switch.
Right, but that's why we don't do it. We, we don't say, we're going to give you a 2% raise and then take 1% in the fall.
I get it.
We, we, we package it together.
But what I'm concerned about is we're about to run, if, let's say, and I get this, I get this, Suzie. This is, you know, this is a, not at 100%. I would love to know what it, the real numbers are. Because right now, I think I'm having a waking nightmare, okay?
So, do you mean budget versus forecast?
I'm looking at this, you know, this $59 million, you know,
That's our forecast.
Fund balance operating in months at a 1.3.
So that's our forecast for what we think it really will be.
Okay, well, that is.
But remember this though, Ms. V, that's if we do nothing. And we're not going to do nothing. Just like what we showed you earlier in the cuts. We're going to continue. But what I'm saying to y'all is, the deep, the, the, the more, the higher the deficit or the larger the deficit, the deeper the cuts become. Because you have to keep making it up. And remember, again, 87% is in people, folks. Like, that, it's, it's, that's where all the money is. And I cannot, you just saw tonight in our proposal, we got a half a million dollar increase to CPS, because utilities aren't going down. Yeah, so we faced a 175,000 in, in, in insurance premium for, for our properties. But that doesn't mean next year isn't going to be when we just suffered the largest hailstorm in San Antonio. Like, all of this stuff is coming, right? In an era of no revenue. Ms. Shelton, I'm sorry, I know you have a question.
I have two questions. One, I would like to see a comparison of total compensation. So you gave us a comparison kind of where we are against districts eight through five, one through five. Where are we in terms of total comp? Because I think that'll be helpful for us to understand, you know, why people stay or go. So that will be one. The second.
I was surprised that we didn't have that this year. Because we've gotten that the last couple of years, so it'd be handy to have. Sorry, thank you.
No, no, that's. It's a, it's a hard slide to read.
It's, it's, it is actually, it is, it is, it is a really good comparison of.
Suzie, do you have it?
I don't, I don't have it on this machine right now, but we can get it to you very soon.
Well, yeah, what we can do, Ms. Shelton, i- i- and, look, if, we got two choices. We can either send that to you tomorrow in an email and let you look at it, or we can bring it, because we have another budget study on Monday.
I think it would be, sorry, again, I'm interrupting your questions. I think it would be handy to have ahead of time, and then also in the, just, in the presentation.
So my second thing, as I look, trying to be your backup, look for ways to save money. Are our employees asking for hospital indemnity? Or is that something we just automatically do? I'm not sure how much money is tied to that.
It really is not a huge cost driver in the health plan. And so it's not something, but it is, for those who choose not to participate in our health insurance, it is at least a benefit we can provide. Again, it's not very costly in the grand scheme of the health insurance overall total cost. And so it's, it's not a, it's not a low-hanging fruit that would help us in this situation.
Understood. And I don't know if this is the, this may be the right session. I, um, our ESER funds, I know, are going away. And as I understand it, and we can maybe have a conversation later, that we use that for stipends to support our special ed instruction. Do we have ideas about as that money goes away for those instructors, how we can close the gap so that they're not taking a hit?
At this time, with that funding being eliminated, I am not aware that we have something in place for that.
Okay.
But we can definitely.
Okay.
So, so Ms. Shelton, and, and Mr. Byer, you had sent me something a while ago. But ESER, when we approached it, we always believed, now, if you haven't heard of the fiscal cliff of ESER, then you haven't sat enough education meetings with me. But a lot of people are talking about the fiscal cliff. We're not worried about any fiscal cliff with ESER. Because when we went into it, and at the time, the board, I explained is, these are one-time dollars. You cannot fund ongoing positions with this. And so we use them in a targeted manner in some of those things, but always under the, the guise of, these were going to go away. Like, we cannot do it. I believe Mr. Byer, when you sent it to me, was, it was an article about hundreds of people being cut out of a school district because they funded it with ESER. You've got to have a way to, to, to have it live on, and we knew. So as we looked at using it, we used it for things like HVAC. So we upgraded a tremendous amount of HVAC systems across this district. Thank goodness we did, because then we didn't have, you know, problems, right? So we used it on things that weren't ongoing. Yes, we did a few positions here and there to do it. But even there, we worked closely with HR and Shyla to make sure that anybody we brought in, it clearly stated, when these funds run out, that position runs out. That we wanted to be upfront and transparent with people to say, this is going to run out. None of those were ever done to ongo. Like, they were never built to do that. Because, again, revenue's flat, there's, there's just nothing coming in. And so we can't get what's held outage blood from a turnip, right? That's what we're trying to do. That's what we're trying to do. Because Shyla and her folks worked last year on a very targeted compensation plan. And I wish there was a little money so that we could continue it, because we have a good second phase to it. But there's nothing, I mean, you can run it up, but it's at what point do you wanna be? What, that's what I need from y'all, is what are y'all comfortable with? We told you what we think, but it's ultimately, you all are the board. We just bring, I just bring a recommendation. I need to know where you all are comfortable. You don't have to definitively tell me right now, but it helps if I know where you're leaning. Like, Ms. Jidge, you said you want an increase, okay. That's fine, you know, that's what I need to know. We can take a look at it.
Just to close the loop on that, Dr. Micah, I am, like, I get it, right? I recognize it was probably writing, all of that. There is an emotional, there's emotion tied to that. Even if you had it two years ago and you knew, you weren't anticipating it for the new school year. So, I think it's incumbent upon us to work through how we help people get to a good place, whatever that looks like. And that's why it's important to know, what is the total compensation? It's important to know, what are, what's the other low-hanging fruit that's out there? So that we can help people stay whole and then get to the next level. It's a great place to work for lots of reasons. Let's not let compensation be the same that-
And may I just jump in? You can go if you'd like first.
No, you know, sadly, I agree with you. However, the world we live in right now is, we're hanging off the cliff. And we have a string that is holding us by the waist, and we're ready to go over that cliff. And if we keep pushing this, you know, we're not even going to have a district to talk about. So, I mean, I'm looking at these numbers, I'm literally sitting here shaking. Because I'm looking at, if we cannot be irresponsible and keep driving this over the cliff. And, you know, we knew when we were giving that raise last year, because it was well-deserved. It's, this is not any reflection upon the job anybody's doing or not doing. This is a reality. The state let us down. We have absolutely no prospect of them actually doing the right thing in this coming legislative session. Don't look to them to bail us out. Our costs are going through the roof. We have CPS who thinks absolutely nothing about gouging our eyes out. They don't care that, you know, we have kids to, you know, to educate. No one cares. Our food costs are going up through the roof. So, you know, frankly, I'm looking at this, and I, you know, TEA, if we get to 26, 27, TEA's gonna look at this and essentially tell us we're breaking the law. So, you know, you gotta, yeah, times are hard. Times are hard for everybody. And I don't wanna be the one that drives this over the cliff. And I also don't wanna be the cause of having to, you know, have massive layoffs because we all feel so sorry for everybody. You know, right now, hard choices are being made all the way across the board. Every family, regardless of whether or not they're, you know, in education or just in the communities, people are being laid off everywhere. So, you know, we gotta get real with this. And, you know, I, I'm looking at this, I'm, you know, thinking, "Oh, my gosh, well, why are we paying an extra $18 a month?" You know, even that, and you start doing the multipliers, and you start going all the way through, and you go, "Well, this could be, you know, four million bucks that we could save here." And if we don't start getting real like that, and actually looking and going line item by line item by line item, and really figuring out what we can live with and what we can't, we are gonna drive this bus over the cliff. And I don't wanna do it.
So, Ms. Shelton, I'm sorry, I asked Suzy to back up, because I agree with you. It is emotion. Like, again, I spent a day listening to very folks who are experiencing a wide range of things, right? This is why, off and on with stipends that are given, we have a love kinda hate relationship with them, because stipends can go away. And when they do, people feel like they're justified, but stipends go in and out. Here's an interesting piece, so if you look at the slide that's in front of you. We've looked at this now for the last couple of years. Correct me if I'm wrong. District seven, where we lose the most teachers to, also happens to pay the least amount. By far. I'm gonna say that again. District seven, so this area, District seven, that we lose 131, and we only get 32 back, are the lowest-paying district by far in the area that we compare to.
And very high health insurance.
Correct. Extremely high.
So, that's culture?
No. So, well, here's the thing, yeah. I wanna be with my kid, that's where I live. There's a lot of new home growth out there. There are a lot of other factors that are driving this. That, because, again, I think everybody thinks they have the answer, right? I think I would encourage everyone to always think that. It's easy to try to point at one thing. It's always a multitude of things, right? That are at play, that make this happen. And so, we sat, I shouldn't say we, a staff member, sat and explained, like, "Look, you're going to pay this in health insurance premium in that district. Here is the pay. You're going to lose it." It was like $7,000. And they said, "I don't care, I'm gonna go be with my kid." I don't, you know, see, there are other pieces. Somebody on my staff has a person that works out there. It's all about geographics and with their kid. Has nothing to do with, you know, yes, salary is important, there's no, there's nothing, like, look, it is. But salary isn't always the only thing people make a decision around, right? And so, you know, like, you know, again, you're new. Like, look, for four years in a row, we've been a Forbes Best Places to Work place. That, you know, and it's interesting how people are like, "Oh, well, you've paid for it." I didn't pay anything. I don't even, I didn't even, I was surprised the first year I came in. It's a total independent thing. So, there are a lot of factors at play. And again, I'll just say, I hate where we're at. I really do. Because no superintendent likes to sit and say what I'm having to say tonight. But I'm staring down legislative session that doesn't, if I were a gambling man, and I'm really not, I would've bet that they were going to do something this last session. I was shocked at the very minimal amount that they gave us in safety. Even though they tout, like, they're all about safety. Then, when you, it sounds so big, 1.2 billion. Put it in 1,200 school districts. It's not that much. And so, that's the thing, like, those big numbers sound big. But when you put it into a big system like education, it's not that much. And again, there's 5 billion sitting up there in a budget allocated for schools that they never released. They just didn't do it.
Okay.
Ms. Landry, you had a, did you have a question? You had your mic on earlier. I didn't know if you were just trying to jump into the conversation, or maybe I misunderstood you.
No, I think between the conversation, my question got answered.
Ms. Shelton, did you have any other questions? If you have questions, ask questions. We, I mean, this is why we're here. And if you have some, I mean, we'll have another budget study session next Monday, too. But I wanna make sure everybody's comfortable with the information that they're hearing, they're getting. Ms. Thompson, you have a question?
I don't know if it'll, if it can get answered. But on average, when we're talking certified teachers, what would that 1% increase be, like, dollars per month? Just kind of an average? Because I was hearing, you know, this $1,500 ask.
A 1% raise nets a teacher about $600 a year. I'm gonna look at Shyla real quick. Yeah. And so, about $600 a year, or $50 a month.
The powerful thing, though, about it being, to Terry's point, it being a raise versus retention, is that it goes towards their future, right? That's the win.
And we're talking about all of our costs that are going up at their houses. All of those costs are going up.
The same costs are going up.
And so, to ask them to do it, I mean, $50 is $50. I would love for it to be more, but I think it needs to go into their TRS.
But then again, you're looking at the, you know, where we are.
But that's if we do nothing, and we don't go out for those two pennies, and all those things on the list that she said that are great ideas that we can do.
Can you send us the updated present, the presentation from tonight? Because it didn't have some things that showed-
Yes, we added a couple of slides today.
The 1% retention, 1% raise, 2%.
And we'll do our comparison, so the net compensation's kinda, it won't be every district. It's hard to find other districts that have comparable plans to us. Because some of them have 70-30 plans versus 80-20 plans. And anyway, we will throw that in there and get you a revised one tomorrow.
And I think it's worth, just for, maybe it's not to the exact penny, the exact dollar, but just generally understanding what a take-home pay is here versus-
And what we do through the whole exercise is show you with the different plans. So, if you're on employee, if you're on employee, children, employee spouse, and employee family. So, you have four options, whether it's you're just covering yourself, yourself and your kids, yourself and your spouse, or yourself and everybody in your household. And what we find, just what you'll see, is our, once you get beyond employee, other districts are charging $1,000 or so more for employee family. And here at Northeast, it's about half that. So, it really makes a, it's a big difference when you're talking about hundreds of dollars every month in premiums. So, we'll add that in and submit to you.
But I do wanna say, there's no point in giving them a retention or a raise, and then taking it away with an insurance raise.
Absolutely.
Sure. When we're talking about the, I was looking at the preliminary expenditure changes, and we talked about the calendar change going less than 180 days. Do we know what that, we know it saves us about a half a million dollars. But what funding did we miss out on by, do we know what that dollar amount is? Because we were gonna get additional funding for adopting a different calendar than we did.
So, with the calendar, you qualify for additional days school year allotment, and it gives you half of a day of ADA for, and we were only leveraging-
It gets you, it gets you half-day ADA, so ADA is $34 a day. So, you'd get $17 a day for 30 days for any elementary-age child for 30 days. So, I think that was around 1.2 million, is what we generated as a school district.
When our summer school program was at its most robust. And so, over the last few years, that's come down. And so, we're not generating quite 1.2 million anymore. I think it's a little bit less than a million. But we also have other costs associated. And so, the net impact of that should be a savings of about half a million.
And then, I guess, for purposes of the discussion, so everybody kinda here, can we get a general outline about the VA TRE and the timeline? I know it asked one on a November election.
We did a presentation in the fall for it, I think, at the September or October meeting. We'll pull that back up and include that with your resources.
Because that's a, it's a process that has to start, like, quickly in order for it to even be considered at some point. So, I think that would be handy for everybody to know what that process is and what the timeline is.
What is it, I understand what it gets us, but does it, would it support, whatever the pennies were, would it support the increase in pay? Would it get us out of the 36, 38, 40 million?
So, the most, the most, the highest contribution from the state are on the first eight pennies, and we already have five. So, the next three pennies would generate the most revenue for us. Those three pennies would generate about 27 million in revenue. So, they would not get you all the way there.
Are we going line item by line item by line item and seeing just even snipping here, snipping there?
Whenever I was talking about that department review, we go every transaction for a department for the last three years, looking for anything. And every time, any question, anything, everybody's really taking a new look at everything, trying to find better ways, more efficient ways for all the pieces. And so, with every vacancy, we're looking at, can we redesign a department and keep maintaining our level of service, meet all of our requirements? It's a lot of data, it's a lot of reports. The staff over there have spent a lot of time poring through a lot of worksheets. Just, we're just combing and combing and combing.
And I think everybody needs to remember, this is, I mean, we're talking multi-year process and steps in this. It's not gonna happen overnight. And so, I think that list of items is important to keep in mind, that there are things happening every day where we're trying to uncover things, and look at things, and relook at things, new ways of doing things, more efficient, cost-effective, but with the students in mind, with the schools in mind, with the teachers in mind, so that we don't lose focus on those educational outcomes at the end of the day. So, it's tough, and it's not a fun conversation, but, yeah, if we've got questions, let's ask them. Anything else?
Now that we're all thoroughly depressed, yeah.
I can just say one thing, though. I mean, for comparison's sake, if y'all can just look at the health insurance and what we charge the employees compared to the other districts, it's quite a big difference. I mean, you know, there's TRS active care that some of the districts have. And, you know, their family coverage is over $2,000 out-of-pocket per month. I don't know who can do that. So, in the past, we've showed you what other entities, and I guess it'd be good information to send it to you. We didn't do it this time, since there was no increase to the employee side of things. But when we present the premiums in August, that's when we usually show you, but we can send you those. It's hard to get that information sometimes, because a lot of times, other districts don't like to share. We might have last year's numbers, but they haven't, like Dr. Micah said, they're talking about raises, but come this fall, since they're a January 1st entity, or I mean, I'm sorry, a 10-1 entity, that's when they come out with their raise. So, usually, they'll get a raise, but then they really hit the employees with a bigger health insurance.
Yeah, we're struggling to collect some of that data now, because districts are keeping some of that health insurance. are keeping some of that health insurance premium information behind their firewall, so we're...
And we always like showing it because it, it puts us in a really, really, really great light. And, you know, the board, kudos to the board, the past 20 years, I mean, they've always been able to keep the premiums on the employee side really low, and they've been eating a lot of those increases. That's why you saw the 74-26 split. But anyway, I, you know, we, like I said, we talk about health insurance. I think people who have their own health insurance, and if you were just to see what our rates are compared to what you might be paying, you, you might see a big, big, big difference.
Well, what I'm, you know, I'm, I'm hearing this, and I get it, that we are substantially lower in cost. This is why I'm having a hard time. I know this is pennies in the grand scheme of things, but it all adds up. Why are we absorbing that extra $18 a month?
For it to try to transfer 1.8 million to the employees, their increases would be a lot higher than what the district, the district is contributing 1.6 million. A raise would cost us 4.2 for just 1 percent. So if we can do that instead of passing it on to the employees, the 1.6 is a lot of money. But with the way we're looking as far as compensation for the employees, either giving a retention or a raise, if you were to hit them, it'd be a lot more than the 18 per employee. Because remember, we're split, spreading it out over 8,300 employees. What helps us is 2,100 of our employees have a health, a hospital indemnity plan. So the district's still contributing every employee, and that includes them. That helps the overall health fund to keep the cost down. So if you have insurance with a spouse or somewhere else, you only have hospital indemnity. But the district is contributing the full amount just as you were just an employee. So that also helps with the overall cost. So, I mean, we, we manage it, we look at it very closely, we look at different cost structures, and so every year, and not necessarily every year, but in the past, the district has eaten up some of that. Last year, we didn't do, I guess we gave the big raise, but in some of those other outlying years, yeah, we had to go to the employees. We're looking at, I mean, this big deficit, I mean, if you were to pass it on to the employee, 1.6 million instead of a...
Bottom line is, is the employee's going to eat it.
Yeah.
So we do not want for our employees to, to face an increase in healthcare, period, because it's going to hit their pocketbook. So we want to offset that potential cost increase to them and make it that the district absorbs that.
And it would likely be more than $18 because the district is in bulk, which is why it's cheaper for us.
That is correct.
The individual would pay at a much higher rate.
Yes, ma'am.
So it's not, it's not a one-for-one. It's a pay, it's a pay cut for our employees if we pass that on to them.
If we gave a 1 percent raise and evenly spread out that 1.8 million, it would eat up half the raise in increased premiums.
I get it, I get it. It's just, I'm, I'm grasping here, you know, just trying to think, you know, at air. So I get it.
Any other questions, comments? I want to seriously thank everybody for hanging in there with us tonight. We appreciate your patience and understanding. Ms. Lackhorn, thank you very much. Mr. Villarreal, thank you for bringing this to us. And if nothing else, adjournment, and the time is 11:33.